Okay, welcome everybody. We're starting this evening at 6:30 to review policy and then we'll move into our regular business meeting at 7:00. So please rise for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. So Ms. Farmalaro is making a few... Okay, perfect.
President Hammond?
Here.
Vice President Clemens here. Trustee Daly?
Yep.
Trustee Clark?
Here.
Justice Sorge is here.
No, he will be joining us. He's just running a little behind. Okay, the first policy for review this evening is policy 1336.
What about 1335?
Oh, sorry. I thought I was...
What about what we passed over last time?
Okay, go ahead. Sorry.
So I... Just have that one next to you there.
So it could be that I'm like really stuck on how the policies were organized previously, which I found very useful. So one of the things that like a document like this is, you know, it's intended to... I mean, utility isn't part of how user-friendly it is. And there's something about how the policies, the 1,100 policies and the early 1,200 policies were organized previously that I found very accessible and made a lot of sense to me. And so I'd still like to table the 1,100s, 1210 and anything before 1230 and ask that we receive contact Erie Bosses and see what are the... What's the structure that they recommend for those initial policies? Because right now I feel like the way we've revised them, it conflates... So in some cases, it conflates like what the Board of Education's authority is with what the nomination and election process is. And I feel like those are separate. And so again, I'm perfectly willing to acknowledge that I am being constrained by this cognitive map that I have based on reading the older policy manual. And so, yeah, so I mean Erie Bosses, they... We could ask them, what do they currently have for... This is their numbering structure. What do they currently have for the 1,100s and the 1,200s? So the 1,100s is at least previously in our earlier manual was organization of the Board of Education, whereas the 1,200s were about nomination and election. And I think those are important distinctions. And right now what we're doing is we're bringing some of what used to be qualifications, nominations, and election into what the Board of Education's authority is. Now maybe that's what Erie Bosses is recommending and I am being stubborn and again, limited. But I would like to see... I would like for us to contact them.
We have that. We already have all of the...
What they recommend?
Policies that they sent.
So that would be... So having what they sent for the 1,100s and the 1,200s to me would be useful.
We have that and that we can give to you. I think Linda has copies of that. But one of the things that you will see all throughout the policies is that there's repetition. And if there's any relationship whatsoever, it will be repeated. And people may be looking for something that would be in one area and they may look for something in a different area. And it has to be in any place that people would go to look at it.
Yeah. Repetition makes a lot of sense to me and that there would be repetition makes sense. Again, I'm still trying to understand this what feels to me like conflating of issues that weren't previously conflated. If they need to be conflated and that's what Erie Bosses is recommending, then I will move on. But for now, I'd still like to hold off on the 1,100s. And I think we started last time with 1230. So anything that would come before...
1110, 1120.
So, yeah. So whatever Bosses recommends for the 1100... For those... For organization of the Board and nomination and election of the Board. And another thing I think would be helpful, again, maybe I rely too much on sort of scaffolding to understand things, but our previous Board policy book had like a... Like a table of contents.
That would happen after we finish a chapter.
All right. But I would... And that's fine, but I would assume that Erie Bosses has a schema or an organizational structure in mind when it groups things as 1,100s or groups things as 1,200s or as thousands. And so having that would be... We don't have to accept it. And no doubt about it, we would need to revise it based on whichever policies we choose to adopt. But again, I would find it.
So maybe what we're saying is going through the policies as we are is beneficial, but we might need to revisit how they're actually organized in a table of contents. Or could we even change the numbering of them to reflect like a different organization? And maybe that's something we do after the fact, like once the policies have been gone through, we go back and figure out where they should all be if we want to make any changes to where they are.
And again, it's... Again, I may... I realize I might be being stuck, but that would be helpful for me.
Yeah, and the numbers are confusing, especially since some numbers we've gotten rid of and put together. And so we might want to renumber them in the efforts of, yeah, organization.
The only thing I would say is if there's specific policy numbers that correspond with specific topics, we'll have to work around that. And then we'll have to figure that out.
Sure.
Yeah.
Right. Good. Thanks.
So we're at 1350, right?
1335?
1335 is what I have, yeah.
Sorry, you're correct. I was on the next one. All right. Okay, 1335 is the appointment and duties of the claims auditor. Are there any questions or comments?
I just had a comment on the second page. It calls out Board of Cooperative Educational Services. And I think Peggy mentioned this in a different policy earlier on, but it might be good to parenthesize that as Bosses.
Bosses, yep.
Okay. Hey, Evan.
Hi there.
How you doing?
1336. Duties of the extra classroom activity fund, central treasurer, and faculty auditor. The only thing that I continuously think about is that we often see balances in there from previous graduating classes. I'm not sure if we should be adding something to this policy to make sure that those funds are distributed without having them linger.
Who does this now? Who does this now, Ann?
I believe it's Caitlin Morley.
What currently happens with the extra funds at the end of the year?
Sometimes we've seen on reports... Do you know what I'm talking about? There's balances from previous graduating classes and we kind of shouldn't be leaving funds in the...
Funds in the accounts.
Well, in your... The class is supposed to determine what they want to do. It's usually a gift. They can...
So can we say maybe they should make that determination upon graduating so that we're not revisiting? It's just the thought that...
Right. To have them put it into a procedure, you know, that might be more appropriate in the regulations because that's procedural.
That's probably... Okay. And that's the whole other piece of this, right? So we're going through these policies where sometimes procedure is going to be affected.
Policies are general and the regulations can be changed because procedures often change with mandates and, you know, just what we have to comply with. So instead of constantly updating the policy because of operational changes, you would change the regulations.
That's a good point. So my... I had a thought on letter E, assumes other duties customary to the position. And I was like, well, maybe we should be more specific about what that means. But that would actually be in the regulations.
Anything else on this?
Can we put something in there along the... You know how we provide the training for the advisors? That they must attend training when it's available, when offered by the district? Something along those lines?
That could be part of the regulations as well.
Right. You know, just like when it's offered, they must attend.
Yeah, you know, so it makes sense that it would be part of the regulations or another policy. I agree. I don't think it would go here because this particular policy is about the... Just the duties of the Board in establishing these different roles, I think, and what the roles are.
Maybe something along the lines of that the Board must provide it like once every X amount of years or what it like? We've been doing it like every other year, pretty much?
We've really been doing it annually in the past since the new auditor and Board because there are changes every year. And it doesn't... If some things, once a year, it doesn't hurt to refresh it.
That does sound like that would be appropriate to have in the policy then. The Board's responsibility for providing the training.
Right. Right.
But not in this policy. Because this policy is about appointing these different people, right? It's about appointing the treasurer.
It's also identifying their duties.
Oh, and so that person's duty would be to ensure that this training is offered? Right.
Well...
No, I know.
This is central treasurer and the auditor. You're talking about extracurricular advisors.
Yeah.
So that would go... It could go into the regulations for extracurricular advisors.
Right. Okay.
And that would be a different place.
Okay.
Do we want to... Do we want to create some sort of parking lot for these kinds of issues as they come up? So this is my experience, right? So we're in the thousands. We're going to go through the 7,000s. In my world of things, right? When something comes up, that's something we want to make attention to address later on. I just... Yeah, I just want to... Like one way to do it would be... I can hear myself so loud. Would be to do it as a Google Doc. Like I just... I don't...
These are in Google Docs.
Right. But this is... I'm talking about...
Create a Google Doc.
What?
So we could just create it as a Google Doc.
Well, I was thinking like I want to make sure that we're not violating any open laws rule, but I don't think so. I mean, if we...
Policies are public.
Yeah. So I guess we could on that... On that... In that Google Drive where the policies are, these policies aren't right now, but where the policies are, I can make a note to create a Google Doc of issues.
Policy 1336 or whatever.
And you're keeping a list as we go?
And it's also in the minutes.
Right.
So that'll be helpful.
But Julia's keeping a list of changes, right? Or you... Yeah. I'll do the parking lot.
Great. Thanks.
Okay. 1337, duties of the school attorney. I had no questions or comments.
I just had a question. And I thought that maybe it doesn't go here. Maybe it goes in the contract with the attorney. But I just wanted to make sure it was someplace that if there's a conflict of interest for that attorney, that they recuse themselves from any situation. You know, we ran into that this year. Our attorney services multiple school districts. So is that in the contract with the attorney, do you think?
I think we'd have to pull it out.
Right. Because it wouldn't go here necessarily. It's not their duty. But it should be somewhere that if there's a conflict of interest that they recuse themselves and recommend other counsel or something.
So can we... Would you put that down so we can pull out the contract to see if there's wording for that?
Yeah.
1338, duties of the school physician and nurse practitioner.
I don't have a comment.
No comment. 1339, duties of the internal auditor.
I didn't have any comments.
Neither did I. 1340. I don't think this was the revised version, the student representatives to the Board of Education. This is the old version, so we're going to need...
Add them in.
That's a parking lot one, I think, Peggy?
Right, because it changed it all to student advisor.
Right. And there's the... So actually, so this is another thing maybe we want to ask, right? So we should have a contact at Bosses, right? So I think that's another thing. How did this issue come up? We knew that what we had done wasn't exactly... They must have a variety of policies regarding this. And so that's something...
Well, that came to us through Mike Lambert.
Right. Which is great. But I would assume that Erie Bosses has alternate... Like has policies that we could... Now, did we adopt that policy? That we already... So that policy replaces it. So there's not anything that we need to look at. Except I still think that even though... I appreciate that Mike sent us, but if we have this service, this Erie Bosses service, I would appreciate seeing what do they... I would like to compare the two policies, right? We accepted it from him based on his recommendation and that's great. But I'd like to see if they're in the business of... If we're paying them to be recommending these policies, I'd also like to see what they recommend. So...
Excuse me.
Well, we'll get to that at some point. Where is the student advisor policy in our... It's not 1340 anymore.
No, we'd have to pull it out of the new ones.
It's somewhere along the line, right? So we'll get to it eventually.
So we'll put a comparison with the one we have.
And what is the communication? Like who is our contact for Erie Bosses? Like if we want to ask like, oh, we'd like to see what are your... What are you recommending for these kinds of policies?
It's any of the labor relation lawyers that are up there. So they do... They have a group of attorneys that create the policies together.
But who is our contact? Like who...
The name of the contact?
No.
Is it you? Is it Linda? Is it Julia?
Who is the person that reaches out to them?
I would say more than likely Linda. I could do with that as well. And have you had opportunity to contact them?
No.
So it would be either the superintendent or Linda.
So could we ask? Could we have you ask Linda to contact Erie Bosses for the policies related to student...
Representative.
Representative, advisors, the different options for that?
Yep.
And they may not be in the 1,300. I mean, because I can't remember what the number was of the policy that we did with Mike. But it would be... I think it would be good to have to review.
Okay.
Okay, so 1340 is out.
1341, registrars. I had no comments.
Actually, can we hold on for just a second?
Uh huh.
I don't know that we follow this, though.
That we don't...
Trying to figure out. Four qualified voters. I was trying to figure this out.
What is this for?
And I thought this was something that we approved at our end. Go ahead.
I can actually explain this. What you... You may remember that there are sometimes what we call buff cards in the poll books at election time. Registration to vote in school elections used to be on those buff cards. So we had individual cards and people would sign the individual cards. Our registration for voting is mostly handled through the Board of Elections now. So I get poll books from the Board of Elections. I still have maybe three or four buff cards for people who've chosen to register to vote only in the school district elections and not in the political elections. So there isn't really a purpose for the Board of Registration anymore.
Do our registrars serve four-year terms?
No, they're appointed annually.
Yeah, see, I think that I'm not so sure that we're following it as it's written. So we should probably review this and modify it.
But are you saying we don't need it at all? That it's not... It's outdated?
Well, we have... We have a voter registration that takes place the Thursday before Election Day. And we hire somebody to handle that voter registration. And if somebody wants to come in and register to vote and they're not registered with the county, they fill out a buff card and they're registered.
So we're going to...
So that's basically all that... That's the only time that it ever happens.
So we should pull this and modify it and return it modified.
Okay. I was thinking... So the plan is to take 1341 as we have it and then for you all to modify based on our current practice. Great.
1410, policy and administrative regulations.
I don't have any comments.
Either did I.
I like at the bottom of it, though, how it does refer also to policies, right? That's the repetition that you were talking about. And it's nice when it's called out that way. It doesn't seem like it's always called out that way, but...
It's not.
That's nice.
And that tends to be a big problem when you're making one adjustment in one policy because it might not follow through in all the other policies. But in this day and age where we have searchable documents, we should be able to update them across the board. We just have to change it in everyone. Yes. But it really would be nice to put them in that way on all of them. Good. Okay, 1510. I think this is the last one we're going to get to tonight.
Oh, 1511.
Sorry.
Wasn't that 1510?
No, 1510.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's what I was looking at. 1510 has them all at the bottom.
So does 14.
The reference. Yeah, okay.
1410 does as well.
Okay. No, I don't have any comments.
Neither do I. That was the regular board meetings and rules, quarts, and parliamentary procedure. And although we thought we'd be ambitious and get through all of them, we'll continue the process at our next business meeting so that we can get on with our regular business meeting at this time. Okay, so welcome. It's so nice to have an audience here this evening. We're going to do things a little different. Did you want me to explain? We have a sign-in sheet here for anybody who plans on speaking. We're going to limit comment to two minutes during... Per speaker during the communications from the public sections. So if you do plan on speaking, please sign in so that Ms. Farmalaro can kind of keep things in order. All right? And if you would like to do so now, if you know you're going to speak, please feel free. Had I known.
We should...
I don't know. I don't know. Say anything.
It's...
No.
Right at the podium.
Just in case. Just place holder.
And if you do sign in and then you choose not to speak, that's okay. Also, when your name is called, you can just say you'd like to pass, so.
And identify the call.
And yes, please, when you come... And you all have to come up to the podium so that... Maybe I should wait.
Boy, I was wondering when that line was going to stop.
If we don't have enough seats, there are some more seats here that we can... So some of you were walking in as I was giving instructions on the sign-in sheet. So I apologize to those that have already heard this. We're going to have a different process this evening just to kind of keep things in order. If you feel as though you would like to speak at any time during this meeting, we're going to ask you to please come and sign in on the sheet so that Ms. Farmalaro can kind of keep track of who's speaking and what have you. And if you do sign in and then you feel like you don't want to speak, when it's your turn, you could just pass. And we're trying to limit comment per person to two minutes. So that's where we're at.
And if you get inspired midway to speak, that's also okay.
Right.
Just sign in along the way.
Thanks. All right. So moving on, we are at the special presentation, which is...
So before we start, though, I want to just kind of open it up.
Please do.
Yeah, that's better. Yeah, so we hear it.
One in the door. People are stuck up there all day.
How did they think that it was in the other room?
Oh, upstairs?
It might be locked up there. Because that was locked before. Now that's locked.
Is there a sign on the door, though?
I don't know.
Just wait a minute before we start. If there's people coming for the...
This door's not locked, though.
This door's open. But people may be confused thinking that the meeting's in the library.
Or they might be just coming through those doors.
And it's not a nice night to operate.
Okay, welcome again for all of you that are joining us. There's a sign-in sheet. If you feel as if you'd like to speak during the meeting, we're going to ask you to please sign in so Ms. Farmalaro can keep order here. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Bowers and Ms. Ann Dineo.
So welcome, everyone. It's nice to see so many people here. We have some parents, we have faculty, and most importantly, we have students. So I think that's something that shows that we have a district that has an interest in what happens. And as we continue to create this process and create our budget, it's good to hear the information and the thoughts and strategies that people have been coming up with. So I appreciate that. So today we had a PTA coffee and I started the coffee much in a similar way to what I would like to say tonight, to talk about the process, the budgeting process. So for those of you who may not have been part of a budget process in the past, these are public budget hearings. And we... The last meeting we had and this meeting and any before were opportunities for the public to come out and to hear our thinking and what we're doing. And we're in kind of an unusual budget year. We had three... The three prior budgets were much easier than this budget is. And we have... We're in a position where we've tried to take unique strategies and use those to help us come up with a balanced budget. We would go into the budget itself and say... And look for places that we could make some changes. And so what we're looking for when we do that are some kind of unique kinds of fixes for situations. So as the years go on, it gets a little more difficult each time to find the fixes. So as we go through, it's helpful for us to know what the community is sharing and telling us and what areas that we can look into. And so we have proposed a couple of things as potential ways of making the budget one that is balanced. Any budget we propose to you this year, unfortunately, will have cuts. And what we're trying to do is find the place that will have the least amount of impact as far as the cuts go on our students. But we need to find something. And so it's one of those things that we just need to prioritize. We need to figure out what the best solution... We need to figure out what the best solution is at this moment in time, and we need to figure out, based on what has happened, where we go. And so the last time we met, as you remember, we were talking about the fact that our foundation aid, which is our basic aid that we use to run the school district, it went up between last year and this year, the foundation aid in the first budget run went up by $4,000. And when you look at a district this size, with the number of students and the employees and all the other things that go along with it, $4,000 is not going to go a very long way. The new budget that was proposed and was voted on and went into place April 1st gave us an additional $55,000. So between last year's budget and this year's budget, the increase in the state aid is about $59,000, just under $60,000. So it's not enough to allow a rollover budget, which means everything we have this year will have next year. And now comes the magic, or unfortunately, the kind of difficult decision-making that goes into figuring out what is the best next step. So we've been talking about best next steps. We've been looking at places where there may be some opportunity. We talked about the special ed services and possibly looking at people with certification and maybe providing services in a different manner. We heard a lot about that as a potential, and so we have, at this point, the budget we're going to be presenting to you, there are no special ed cuts. And so we have, we had to look, and we had a very kind of long, meaningful meeting last night with the Board of Education and all the administrators, and we sat next door for hours and said, okay, let's look at anything and any place we can go to make this work. One of the things that we have had an eye on and have really kind of tried to hold tight on are some of the things that have been included in the budget over the last few years because of the strategic plan. When we looked at the balancing between some of the opportunities we have been able to provide for our students through the strategic plan and the special education services, the priorities shifted last night. And so what we're going to be looking at is decreasing the amount of teachers on special assignment, which, as the teachers know, it's TOSSAs, which are teachers that have been removed from the classroom and have been put in another area, excuse me, for different reasons. And we have three teachers presently that are TOSSAs. We're looking at taking two of those teachers and returning them potentially to the classroom, and we are going to be very conscious over the next couple of years about remembering that we made this choice this year, because these are difficult things to get put into the budget, and they're easy things to get taken out. And we don't want, we put them in because we truly believed that we were meeting the community's needs through the strategic plan, and we believe in what we're doing. We're going to, again, it's not that we're just saying, okay, two TOSSAs will, or potentially, or part of a TOSA will come back into a classroom, and we're just not going to do this anymore. We're still going to try to figure out how to make it happen with less people in the TOSA position. And so when that comes up, you will see that that's kind of where we've landed now, realizing that we have, there is no good choice. It just doesn't exist right now, because we're talking about taking things that have already shown to be successful away because of the funding problems. So I just wanted to kind of open that way, and this is still a budget hearing, which means that we're still listening. And one of the things that we need to do is, we need to make sure that our budget reflects the community's desires and wishes. And we're going to have to figure out, you know, where is, what is the best solution, because the community's voice is what created the need for the TOSSAs to begin with. So it's kind of a balancing act. And so I thought the, we probably were here close to three hours last night, and I thought it was a very, it was a very interesting kind of digging deep and rolling up our sleeves time to come together and come up with the best solution. So as you see the information that's going to be presented tonight, maybe that will help you kind of understand how we got there from last time to this time. And I have to thank the people that shared their thinking, because it really does help to understand what it is that we're looking for. And, you know, there is never a question that special education services are not extraordinarily important for kids. And if you, and I was also sharing this morning, that our school report card has, will be released in the next day or so, and they release it to the school districts a few days early, so you can review it and make sure that what's in it is exactly what should be in it. And one of the things, if you ever get a chance to go on the State Ed website and look at our school report card, one of the things that really was very clear to me as I went through it are the subgroups, which they call them at State Ed, where you have students that may have, be economically disadvantaged, students that are classified, students that have ELL or ESL services and speak, and where English is a second language. And the way that we provide services to these children really levels the playing field, and you didn't see huge disparities between the students that are considered mainstream and the students considered in these small groups. And it's because we do what we do, and it's because we understand the importance of it that that happens. And, you know, I was, and not only was I looking at it as how we as a district educate our kids and hopefully educate them well, but I was also looking at the importance of what we're doing now. And so we'll talk about it if you have questions, if you want to know what brought us to the position we're in now, and if there's something else that we should be considering. But just as I said at the last time, we have, there is something we aren't going to have next year that we have this year, and we just have to figure out what that is. So, Dineo.
Here's a seat, a couple of seats here.
Yeah, we have extra chairs here if you want to pull a couple out.
Okay, so tonight, we're going to start with some information about the state budget that was released on March 31st. We're going to talk about the tax levy limit and other revenues. We'll go into detail about budget proposal number three and the educational enhancements that have been modified to get to it, and then I'll review our propositions two, three, the library levy, and finish up with contingent budget and what that means for us. So on March 31st, the 2018-19 state budget was approved, and as Dr. Bowers told you already, we received an additional $55,000 increase over 1718 foundation aid. It's really $59,000, but in January, they estimated it that it was four, so probably should change that to 59 to be more accurate in that. I apologize for that. That, the good news is that some other things that were in the proposed executive budget in January did not happen, so that we did not have to increase expenditures even more, reduce revenue. The proposals were that expense-driven aid, which is also known as formula aid, was going to be capped, and that would be in our BOSI's aid, our transportation aid, our building aid, revenue that we get the following year based on expenditures the year before. So if they capped expenditures, or they capped the revenue on that, then there would be a loss in that gap. Also, in the proposal was that they were going to cut our summer special education reimbursement by a very large percentage. That would have increased expenditures, therefore leading to more cuts. None of that happened, so the only thing that really affected us was the increase in our foundation aid. Our maximum allowable tax levy increase for 2018-19 is 2.62%. And if you remember, in, there were two years of the property tax freeze credit, where you got a refund of whatever your tax increase was, up to a certain amount, if the school was in compliance with the tax cap, and we were, so if you were eligible, you should have gotten your refund check. Now it's called, beginning in 2017, it's called the Property Tax Relief Credit. So if you're eligible, the credit is a percentage of your star savings. I'm not going to get into it tonight, because it's unique to each person, and it will just take up the whole night. So at the bottom is a web page that you can go to, and you can, there's a calculator there for you, and you can also see if your check went out. So if you're looking for a check from the last couple of years, you know, maybe you have trouble sleeping one night, you want to go on and look for your tax check, then there you go. So in addition to our state aid and taxes, there are a couple of pockets of revenue that we have each year, not huge percentages of our revenue, but there is one category of significance, and that's tuition from other districts, specifically Garrison Union Free School District. They do tuition in students that attend secondary school here. Right now, I don't have any firm enrollment numbers, but it's anticipated that there's not going to be any significant changes there. So that's good news, our revenue in that category will not be going down.
So, Ann, when you say that, you basically mean the number of students that are graduating is basically the same that would be income?
That's correct. So our proposal is $24,070,392. That's a 2.35% spending increase, because our state aid is generally static, and as you can see, we get small increases. Our tax rate increase usually follows our spending plan increase, so, you know, that's what people do look forward to that, but I, you know, that's an estimate. And I always say that several times during these meetings, because we really can't calculate your tax rate until August, when the assessments come out. So, you know, we're creating a budget in May, and you, we don't know what your taxable assessed value is until over the summer.
But I do want to point out that the 2.35% is under the tax cap. And, you know, there are different things that you can calculate into the percent increases, so even though it's called a 2% tax cap, it's very rarely ever 2%. And some years, it's more than, slightly more than 2%, some years, it may be slightly less than 2%, but this is under the legal tax cap for the year.
And you're on.
So one thing that came today, which I just, it kind of reminded me of what, where we, how we got to this journey that we're on, was the budget runs that come from the governor's office are very difficult to read, unless you know what you're reading, and unless you know what all the lines mean and where they all kind of intersect. It's very difficult to understand exactly what's being offered to you from the governor's office. So the New York State Council of School Superintendents creates, usually a couple days after the budget runs are in, kind of a user-friendly version, which I have here. And one of the things that was interesting to me is, it talks about foundation aid, and underneath, underneath it says full phase in foundation aid, and then it gives the amount that's underfunded by the state. And a number of years ago, there were projections that came to all school districts that were telling you how much in, or how much money you would have each year to use to run your district. And it made sense that they were going to give us an understanding of how much money we have to spend. We're probably one of the rare businesses, and if you think of this as a business for just the financial piece, that we have no idea how much we're going to get to spend till almost right before we set the budget. So the budget needs to be adopted at the next Board of Education meeting, there may be one in between that, but the budget gets adopted at that point, and we just found out on April 1st, the amount of money that was going to be given to us. So we have to make assumption after assumption after assumption as we go through this process. But they, at one point, said, we're going to tell you what you're going to get in state aid funding in the future, so you can budget better. And right now, the projection of what we are getting and what we actually will be, what we have now, is a difference of $457,000. So we are underfunded by about a half a million from the state on this projection. And it's not been, we haven't talked about it recently, because we had the projections, then 2008 came and all the financial issues happened, and then all the other things started getting mixed in. But they're returning to this projection, and so that means this year, we're just about a half a million underfunded, but it also means last year, and the year before, and the year before, and the year before. And so one of the things that we should be thinking about, too, as we try to figure out how to budget in this climate, is saying to the people that made us promises, when will we see the funding? And so if you think about from the time, and I think this was at, do you remember, was it like 2006 when it-
It was, so if you multiply that out.
So you multiply between 2006 and 2018, a half a million dollars annually, and it's an incredibly large number for this little district. And so I think all districts are probably having similar conversations right now, but that's something, as New Yorkers and taxpayers and people who believe in the power of education, it's something that we should think about, because the conversation shouldn't end here. It should end in a place where we can make some real change. So, just a sidebar.
And then the gap elimination adjustment stole more money from us.
And the gap elimination adjustment went away two years ago?
Yes.
So what they, which was compounded on this, where they would say, all right, you're going to get, as an example, $100,000, but we're going to take back 20. And so this went on for years, where they would say, this is how much money you're going to get. They'd put your gap elimination adjustment, because the gap was theirs. So by putting a gap elimination adjustment in, they eliminated their gap, and they created ours. And so not only were we not getting this funding, but then they were giving us and taking back in the same breath. So these are, and then luckily, that finally ended. And so we were not having money given and then taken back every year, but we still have a deficit of close to a half a million dollars.
And the unfunded mandates continue to come our way.
Constantly, yeah. And we're just, we're trying to figure out, and one of the things that's in the budget is an increase in technology support, just so we can physically do what the state is asking us to do and provide the information to the state. And you will see in the budget, we have $30,000 going for that, just because we can't keep up at the rate that they're asking us to with the present staffing. So not only are we, are there unfunded mandates, but that money could be used for something different. And so it's all kind of, all goes interrelated. So this is a little bit about what we already talked about. We've been looking at general ed, special ed, and our TOSSAs in these conversations to try to figure out the best way of making things work this year. And, you know, as I retire in, at the end of June, and as you look into the future, and I see people who sat on our Strategic Planning Committee in the audience, we have a real positive change that is going to provide for our students what they need to be, what we need to give to them for the skill set that they will need to be 21st century learners. And so even though we're talking about this year removing some of the teachers on assignment, we really, you really need to think about that and remember that in budgets to come. So I'm done.
Dr. Bowers, could you give a little bit more specific information to the public about what the TOSSAs are currently doing and what they may not be doing next year, or what we might have to find other ways to do, like just a few examples?
So I'd like to start by saying that we're going to ensure that there are, these things, the majority of them continue to exist, so they're not going away. But we have one teacher on assignment that's been doing the learner profiles in grades four, seven, and nine. And these are, and we, this is now moving into our third year, so we're starting to get a number of students that have been told and trained and understand who they are as learners and what they can do as learners to become stronger learners. And they get an idea of what their strengths are, they get an idea of what their challenges are, they learn how to bypass their challenges by using their strengths. And it's just a way to empower kids so they understand that the growth mindset truly exists and you can make changes in your learning as you learn how to work around issues. And so one of the TOSSAs, we've had integrated co-teaching teams that have been teaching the learner profiles. And we've had two teachers, the teacher literally in grade seven and nine sits down with individual students, they create a profile for that student and they talk about what their profile means for them. Then there's also information and there's teaching that goes on with the class as a whole. But right now, what we're looking at doing is move, moving from teams to individuals who will be teaching the classes next year. We haven't figured it out yet, but that's the only place that we haven't figured it out, is what we're going to do with fourth grade. In fourth grade, we don't actually create profiles, but we teach students about who they are as learners or what kind of things they can understand about themselves. We also teach them, and as early as fourth grade, is there is no perfect brain. Everybody has real strengths and everybody has real challenges. And what we have to do is figure out as early as we can how to manage those so we can be the best self they can be. And so part of that would be learner profiles. We also have the DCI classes that are in the middle level and the high school, the discover, create, and innovate. And these are classes which are true deeper learning experiences. Students go in and they create something. It's like, it's a think tank, it's an incubator, it's a creation, it's a maker space, and it's all in something that has meaning for the students. And they, they do, they look at projects and create things and go out into the community and they make a difference. And so those, both of those are directly related to our strategic plan. So we're looking at returning people who have been pulled out of the classroom back into the classroom and then using other support personnel to help with those classes. And where we did have ICT, integrated co-teaching teams, they'll be moving into individual teachers. So.
I'm not sure that was quite, when you talk about ICT, you're not talking about the ICT special ed model. You're talking about.
The ICT and learner profiles.
ICT learner profile, whereas now, the point of the training with the new tech network was so that we could come back and have our teachers teach other teachers and collaborate and learn so that they could pass on the information and begin to process.
Right. And grow and develop other teachers so we have expertise throughout the faculty. So when we get to, when we talk about special education, the ICT teams are in place. The place where the ICT teams may not continue, at least for next year, would be within the learner profile classes. So.
Sorry. Just because it was, it's a complicated discussion and I'm one for always scaffolding understanding, maybe because it's always hard for me to understand things. But I think, I mean, when I hear Diana, when I hear you talk about the, what our TOSSAs have done, it's meaningful, exciting work that has been an important part of the strategic plan. But I think I just want to underline some of what you said, which is, while we're talking about taking those teachers on special assignment and having them return to the classroom, that doesn't mean that the activities that they have supported are going away.
Right.
Right? So they've been working side by side with classroom teachers. So the learner profiles, we feel really well prepared to make sure that continues to happen in seventh and ninth grade. We know we still need to figure out how to support it at the fourth grade. And when it comes to some of the project-based learning, authentic learning experiences where we've had the opportunity to push in a TOSA into classrooms to work with teachers, it is unfortunate that that person will, well, not unfortunate for them returning to the classroom, but that is a resource, that TOSA is a resource that the district will have next year. But that person has been working side by side with other teachers in the district to create, increase capacity across the district, right? For none of these things is our goal ever to have the capacity to reside in a single person. It's for that to share. And so, so while we regret the, losing these things, I think we can also recognize that all along, the goal, and this is the goal in so many professional training activities, programs, is that teachers are working side by side with their colleagues to increase capacity, right? To spread the wealth. So that.
Okay. So we've, we've been looking at where we can make accommodations in general ed. We looked at where we potentially could have made accommodations in special ed and we kind of landed in where we can make accommodations with TOSSAs. Okay. So what is actually in the budget we're presenting tonight? There is no, there will be no reduction in special ed staffing or services. So as we said, it's moved from one of those boxes to the other. We're looking at one of the other areas that there may be accommodations made and we haven't, we don't have that fleshed out fully, is in the library. The two libraries we have in the district. This year, we have a teaching assistant in the elementary. We have a certified librarian in the middle high school. One of the things we're talking about doing is bringing some of the certified librarian time into the elementary school and kind of mixing and matching there. Where that will fall out and exactly how we're going to be utilizing that staff has not been fully vetted at this point. Another thing that we're also including in this, we have our academy and for those of you who don't know what the academy is, it is a alternative setting for high school students that are not, that don't excel in traditional types of settings. And so there, there's a unique setting where they're invited in and they're educated. We've had two teachers that have been part of that for the years at the academy, the two years that the academy has been in existence. We're really proud of that program and we have one of our academy teachers sitting in the audience. We are at the point that we have multiple graduates. We had a graduate last year, we're having multiple, I think five graduates that are graduating from the academy this year. And that's a tremendous accomplishment for those kids and for the people that worked with them. So we're very proud of that and what has happened. And the, the whole idea is to give them a place where they can excel and they can graduate. So what we're also looking at is taking some of the time within, the teachers within the academy and seeing if it can be utilized in other places in the district. So that's also something that's part of this discussion.
Because we're expecting lower enrollment.
At this point, we have lower enrollment, but that doesn't mean that we'll have it at the end of the year. And so we're going to be able to teach all the classes that we've been teaching and we're going to be looking at different opportunities there. But we do have some, some students that do have an interest in attending. We have one student right now that is paying tuition from Putnam Valley to attend. We have a second request coming from Putnam Valley. So we, it's also generating funds for us and having students in the kind of environment that they'll, they'll excel. We also have four sections of third grade. That was also a question. And in the past, when we have gone, there have, we've tried to give the line share of the services for classes in the foundational years, K1 and 2. And then when you kind of hit third grade, the numbers, the need for the lower enrollment, it's always good to have low enrollment, but the need for the lower enrollment really kind of shifts a little bit theoretically as you go into third, fourth, and fifth and the, and the primary years as opposed to the, I'm sorry, the intermediate years as opposed to the primary years. This year, we felt that the needs of the students and the parents were very clear and, and the teachers sharing with us, they really felt that that wasn't in the best interest of this class that's moving from second to third. So we are keeping the four sections of third grade instead of going to the three sections of third grade. We are, we have three sections of kindergarten coming in, but we have a very small kindergarten class, a rising first grade class that's very small. Was it 34?
The current class is 32.
32. So we will only have two sections of first grade. But so we, so we'll have three sections of kindergarten, two sections of first, three sections of second, and then four sections of third. So it's all depends on where they are. We're going to make, do what we need to do in order to preserve the DCI classes and make sure that students have the opportunity to have these unique and exciting opportunities. We have created an arts coordinator's position that hasn't happened before. We do have in the budget, and there was, there was very clear requests at our safety meetings, which we've had within the last month. There, there's been a request for a school peace officer, which is different than a school resource officer. We have Matt here with us, who is our school resource officer, and he is an active duty policeman. A school peace officer is a retired policeman. They provide services for the districts that are somewhat different than the SRO. They don't teach, they can't, and there are other things that they can't do. But there would be additional protection and safety coordination with an SPO. It's also much cheaper to hire an SPO than an SRO because the people who work for New York State know when they retire, they can't make more than $30,000. So the maximum you can pay an SPO annually is $30,000. We have enhanced entrance security that we're putting in the budget for the entrance outside of the gym cafeteria area that most of you walked into tonight. And what has happened in the past is when the day was over and practices start, that door opens. Our elementary kids are still in session.
So we're talking about when the high school day ends.
The high school and middle school day ends.
And the middle school day ends. This door at the bottom gets opened, but elementary classes are still being conducted.
Right. And we have kids coming in and going out, and we have kids that are going to practice and kids that are coming in, and we have games that, through the afternoon, that are coming in and people from different districts, and we don't have any security there. So we're, right, right now, we're in the process of doing a security audit for the district and we have a gentleman from Bosse's who is their safety coordinator that is looking at the district as a whole. And this is very clearly one of those areas that we should be considering, some safety protocols. So we have after-school security in the budget at this point. The technology assistance I talked about from the unfunded mandates are there. We are maintaining our athletic trainer position. One of the things that, the line is going up, the line item is because we are now providing insurance for this position. She's been with us for a couple of years and we're very happy with her. And we were talking this morning too, about some of the local districts within the last three or four months, there, I think there were two local students that were on the field that were saved because of athletic trainer. And both of the districts said very clearly, the children would not have survived, they had a cardiac situation. And neither would have survived without an athletic trainer, so.
I think maybe, and I said this this morning, the name athletic trainer almost doesn't portray exactly what the job entails. Meg is certainly not just hanging out and lifting weights and, you know, with our athletes. Meg is there to basically make sure that our athletes are safe. She can respond as a medically trained individual during emergency situations. During football season, we are required by Section 1 to have either an ambulance there or Meg. So it's kind of, I said it, like I said, I feel like I'm repeating myself to some of you this, from this morning, but it's kind of a misnamed position. And I just kind of wanted to throw that out there. I know there's a couple of coaches in the room. Chris Solomon was there this morning and gave a little bit more in-depth of what she does, but she does a lot more than what I think the name.
And she wraps our students before they play to decrease the potential for an injury and there are a lot of things that she does. She also knows our kids, she knows who they are, she would know if there was a problem that happened on the field and the student was acting differently, she would know the difference.
I think it's also important to point out that, that bringing her was actually in response not only to the recommendations of our athletic director, but really passionate requests from parents whose children had experienced potentially serious.
Concussions.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Kids were, kids had concussions and it's important to have somebody who's really trained, whose sole focus is on kids' well-being. And so this is something we added. It was, it really grew out of what were some really critical events as well as really important recommendations.
So we're also maintaining our required instructional management software. We've also included some additional software that's going to help us determine student growth on an annual basis or a semi-annual basis. And so we need to also support that. And we're, at one point, we had pulled out $30,000 from our professional development line. We have returned $15,000 of that. But one of the things that we are going to use are well-trained experts in, that have gone through training for the last three to four years on deeper learning experiences. We have, when our new teachers come in, they are actually being now trained by our teachers as opposed to being trained by staff developers that we have to bring in. What we are doing differently this year is we have been sending teams of teachers to places for the New Tech Network Summer Institute. And they, two years ago, it was in Orlando, last year, it was in St. Louis, this year, again, it's going to be in St. Louis. And we're going to be using our teachers and bringing the staff developers here to train our teachers instead of sending people out and paying for hotels and flights and all the other components with that. So that, we are still removing $15,000. So we're not going to be looking at that issue. Okay. So you want to do a little more?
This slide details how we closed the budget gap. The rollover budget amount is the $24,405,21. Our target 18-19 budget is what I pointed out earlier, and that's based on our revenue. So really, our budget is driven by how much revenue we're going to get. That budget deficit between the rollover and the revenue we're going to get for 18-19 is $330,129. That changed from a couple of weeks ago because of the additional state aid that we got with the final budget. The reductions, these are putting some, some numbers next to the changes that Dr. Bowers talked about for, for the last couple of slides. Reductions in special ed tuition, $154,400.
Reductions in special ed tuition are students that have been returned from outside placements. One student is going to be returned to the academy and the other student is, is now on home instruction. So it's, these, these are two students that were in high-cost outside placements.
Returning two full-time equivalent TOSSAs to the classroom will save us $170,154. That's a little bit different than what we saw a couple of weeks ago. That's a little bit different than what we saw a couple of weeks ago for the special ed positions because these are actual numbers with the particular staff, not going to get into, you know, names, but you'll say, why doesn't that match what we saw a couple of weeks ago? It's because there are different people are involved. Reorganize library media services. Two aides are retiring and not going to be replaced, so the decrease in the budget through attrition. The total reduction's $456,752. And then, the cost of the additions that Dr. Bowers went into detail with, I don't have to read them to you, you can see them right there, brings us to a balance of, we still have $23 we could spend. Okay? So...
Good job.
There.
Next time, we'll bring coffee and mojito.
So, I'm just going to describe our other propositions that will be on the ballot. Proposition 1 is the budget. It's always Proposition 1. Proposition 2 is a vehicle proposition. We would like to replace 130-passenger bus. It's $55,000. It's funded through a bond anticipation note. It's a five-year debt instrument, but the first payment on it is not until the 1920 budget. During that time, older debt falls off, and then the new debt comes on. I just want to point out here, a lot of people always say, why are you always asking for a bus? What, you know? So, but, there's a reason why every year, we want to replace the oldest bus. In the past, when we did not have bus propositions, our buses were just being taken out of service by the inspector that came here because they were done. We got four cents a pound for them when they went to the scrapyard because there was, there was no value in them. When you have a newer fleet, you have less repair costs, plus you have trade-in value. So, that when we go to replace a bus, we can get several thousand dollars for it instead of $50. So, this is why we like to replace at least one bus a year, and it's based on the condition of the bus. We know that in a couple of years, one of our vans is not going to pass inspection. We'd like to be a couple of years ahead of that turnover. So, that is why there's, recently, there has, in the past few years, there's always been a bus. Proposition 3 is to reestablish the capital reserve. This was established in 2008 for a 10-year term and a maximum amount of $1 million. This is, it's just law that we have to have the voters approve a capital reserve fund. We use our capital reserve fund. We, at the end of the year, if there's any fund balance, we've been putting it into the reserve fund, and we've been using it. We used $100,000 of it last year for the gym renovations and the library renovations. So, it's good to have the savings account, but now it's expiring. So, in order to keep that going for another 10 years, it would need to be approved by the voters.
We also need to have the voters approve it if we're pulling money out of there. So, it's not something that we can just arbitrarily take money out of. There has to be voter approval for that as well.
Since May of 2015, you've been seeing a separate line on your tax bills for the library levy. This was voted on in May of 2015 by the voters, and it's something that is every year, it's been authorized every year now after that vote, that we collect $73,150 for the Butterfield Library. It does not go to the school district. We collect it, it's, we're a pass-through for them because they don't issue tax bills and they have no way of collecting a library levy. We collect it for them and in turn, cut them a check after the, we've collected the funds. And in the event that our budget does not, that it's rejected twice, you see what's been going on with trying to cut $300,000. We would have to cut an additional $551,627 should our budget not pass. In the past, a contingent budget was that you'd cut the equipment out, you'd cut out nonessential services, and then the district would operate on that budget going forward. For the past few years, the definition of a contingent budget has changed, and that means that if your budget fails twice in May, and if you put the, it up again for June for election, and it fails, you may have a zero increase over the year before. So, right now, our proposed budget is $551,627 over the 1718 budget, and we would have to dial that back. So, just wanted to, I think that's an important piece of information to let everyone know.
Ms. Fumilara, would you like to, I'm connected. Grab the, the sign-in sheet. Do you want me to read the names? I think that's probably the best order. I think that's going to be the easiest for you to keep order and track.
Do you want me to keep a timer?
Sure. So, for those of you who missed what we had said in the beginning, we're going to open the floor to public comment at this time. There was a sign-in sheet. If you didn't sign in, don't worry, you'll still be able to speak, but if you did sign in, we're going to start with that process. I know there's a group of students here, and I'm going to offer the floor up to the students.
Can we not limit them to two minutes since this is a special presentation?
Oh, the, yes, the students, oh, I think kept there, but, oh, are they on the first ones on the list? Okay, perfect. So, that works out. So, we'll go.
The first, Morgan.
Do you all want to come up at the same time? Okay, that's fine.
So, what will speak first?
Just start by introducing yourself.
Okay. My name is Evie Ashburn, and I'm a junior at Howden High School, and I'm a part of Schools for Climate Action because I want to address and talk about climate change because it is important to me. I also run an environmental interest group for students here at the high school. And firstly, I would like to say thank you to the board for your work on behalf of our community, and I especially appreciate the solar panels that were recently installed last year. And I am here to encourage you to pass a resolution of climate action, similar to ones passed by schools, including a school in Colorado, of which I will give you guys copies of if you're interested, and my friend Morgan will read some parts of after I'm finished talking. Also, three weeks ago, I created a petition in support of this resolution in which was signed, more than 50, no, 50 of my fellow classmates and community members have signed. School boards are the only group of leadership who are working just for the students, and climate change will disproportionately affect young students. Because of this, I believe climate change is a generational and children's issue, and this is why it's so important to talk about it and acknowledge it in our schools. This resolution is one way to start talking about climate change and take a big step forward to a greater community, which is why I urge you to pass one similar to the one that Morgan's going to talk about, and thank you very much for your consideration.
The resolution that Evie had talked about was passed by the Telluride Board of Education in Colorado, and I'm not going to read the entire resolution, but it, the beginning of it just states why it is important to educate students on climate change issues and everything that encompasses that. And I'm just going to read the actual resolution that they passed, and it says, "Now therefore, be it resolved that the Telluride Board of Education shall continue to encourage nonpartisan advocacy and engagement with local, state, and federal jurisdictions in advocating for reducing the impacts of greenhouse gas emissions. Be it further resolved that the Telluride Board of Education through the superintendent of schools will continue to encourage and support the following initiatives. We will connect with existing municipal, county, and state climate action plans. We will support local walk and roll-to-school and public transportation programs. We will purchase energy from clean energy providers and support local renewable energy efforts. We will continue robust recycling programs. We will support efficient facilities for new construction and retrofits, installation, lighting, all kinds of things. We will encourage curriculum that educates students about the science of Earth's climate and the human impact upon the Earth and everything. And we will encourage opportunities for student participation in local, state, and national decisions that will impact Earth's climate." And this is a part of, I think, four already passed resolutions.
Ten?
Sorry, 10. And this would be the first, if we were to pass something like this, it would be the first one on the East Coast and would set the bar rolling, the ball rolling for, you know, New York State and the East Coast. So, yes, thank you.
And did you want to talk a little bit? Oh, sorry. I have the opportunity to speak with Roberto Mueller, and he kind of explained that you're working here in conjunction with Ms. Valenti, as I understand that. So, did you want to talk a little bit about your experience and how you got here? And you don't have to, I just...
I'm not exactly sure, but this year, I and Morgan started an interest group at our school. So, basically, oh, sorry, yeah, no problem. We just talk with, I think our group, it fluctuates, but we have about 15 students from the high school, and we just talk about issues, like I do some presentations, and then we just have like forums basically where we can openly talk about ways that we individually and maybe as a school can better talk about climate change. And then, the two of us, kind of as representatives from our group, have joined a group that has started in the Phillips Town community.
It's called the Climate Smart Task Force. It's run by the town board of Phillips Town, and we're trying to make our community a, it's a level of classification in New York State that you get a lot of state benefit and all kinds of things for having certain like requirements within the community that are in compliant with their standards of environmental friendly things. So, we're trying to work on things like that. Yeah, so, yeah.
Thank you so much.
I appreciate it.
So, we haven't considered a resolution like this. I think the next couple of, through May 15th, I think we're probably pretty busy. But, I think, I don't know, it's not something that this board has typically done. I think we would just want to consider in the near future what that process would be. I mean, just so that you young women know that there's a lot going on right now, but we're really glad that you came, and I just, I don't even know what the, because it's not something that we've typically done as a board, I'm not sure what that process would be, so.
So, we could put it as a discussion item in a, in a couple, minimum a couple of months, maybe in June or end of May. Is that what you're thinking?
And just one, and just for, thank you, for the students, whether, whether or not the resolution goes forth, goes forward or not, there are multiple ways the board can support you without the resolution as well. So, it's not that or nothing. So, moving forward, and probably looking towards probably the summer will be, when it will be addressed, or June, there are multiple ways, and I'm sure the board is going to be willing to support you in, in multiple ways.
Thank you. Yeah, because I heard there was like practices, classes, I mean, there's practices, classes, I mean, I want to read a little bit more, but, yeah.
Great. Sure. Go ahead.
Sort of part of the contingent, I can like, I'll just go over, but I'm on the next one.
Oh, okay.
Are you Crystal? I'm Crystal. We're all together.
So, I'm Crystal Ford. I actually have a son at Garrison, so he'll be at Howden in eight years, but just laying the groundwork right now. Hi. So, I'm actually on the Climate Smart Task Force with Evie and Morgan, and I'm starting this exact same process at Garrison. And one of the things that I was recommending is establishing a climate change committee that's comprised of students, parents, community members, teachers, who can make recommendations to the board. So, for instance, at Garrison, we filled out a geothermal challenge through the New York Power Authority, and if we're, if we qualify, they're going to come out and assess us for free if we're good candidates, and then give us funding. So, that's something that could happen here if there was someone that could, you know, be the point person, and I know there's a lot of people who are very interested, you know, we have 20 volunteers on the task force in Cold Spring, a lot of them have kids at the school. I've been in Mr. Wick's class, he's amazing, by the way. He had two grade six students make documentaries on climate change and interviewing Mark Swain, and they presented at this Eco Action Day that we had in March, and they were fantastic, so bright, and anyways, and I just love working with him and Carolyn. So, I feel like if you were able to establish a climate change committee, I think you could find a lot of people who would be willing to help you out in whatever, you know, direction you, you want to go in. So, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Andrea McHugh. I'm a high school special ed teacher. I'm also the department chair for 7 through 12 special ed, and I'm also the president of the Howden Faculty Association. And I just wanted to say, I was one of the, of the people who were at the last board meeting, and, and I just wanted to say on behalf of the special ed faculty and on behalf of all of the people who expressed their concerns about the other proposal, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for, for listening and for taking our considerations to heart, and, and thank you for doing what truly is right for kids.
Thank you.
It's Furch. And I'll just say, "Giddo," and then I'll pass. Thank you. Okay. Corey Reister?
I'm going to say, "Giddo," and pass, and you students rock on, and don't stop advocating for what you believe in.
Mae Vang Wong?
Yes, same. I'm going to say, "Thank you." I do have to go up there and say, "Thank you." I have to go up there.
Yeah.
I've been up here many times for happy things and not-so-happy things, but I just want to say thank you for reconsidering the budget, for, for doing, making some compromises I know are very difficult for you to make, and I also wanted to say thank you to all the people in the Learning Differences Committee who are also very thoughtful as parents, and I, and one thing that has been really great is that, and also, all of the faculty coming and seeing them here is really wonderful, but especially all of the younger parents, and I feel like sometimes the old parents and the young parents don't get together, and in this particular thing, all the young parents and the old parents were just like co-mingling, and it was awesome. So, I can't wait to see more of that. So, thanks a lot for the opportunity, and thanks for the budget.
Steve Petkus?
Yes. I'm Steve Petkus. I'm the father of two Howden boys in fifth grade and 10th grade, right, you all? That's great. And I wanted to speak to a part of the reductions as presented tonight that concern me, which is the library piece, and you mentioned that, that's sort of indeterminate as yet as to what is actually going to happen there, but the $63,000 lost in that area concerns me. I myself am a school librarian down in New Jersey, and we think of our library at my school as an intellectual center for the campus, a hub of a lot of different activities, and it seems like it's really critical to support that and not to... and it seems like it's really critical to support that and not diminish it. And in fact, I feel like at this school, it should be further supported instead of reduced. And I'm kind of wondering what your thoughts are about where that's heading. And in fact, we, there's also, I did a little research into what's mandated by the state in terms of libraries in schools, and we fit, I could, I could give people the citation, but we fit into the range in the secondary school, which is defined as the middle and high school, of three, of 500 to 700 students projected based on what you guys had on the, in the Google Docs. It was about 520 projected for the following year, and that would mean that we, at a bare minimum, we would need a full-time librarian in that division, or in the middle and high school, to be teaching five classes a day. And that's more than halftime. Halftime would be if we fit in the 300 to 500 student range. And so, it really concerns me, and that's the, that's the minimum requirement. So, I don't think of Haldane as a place that shoots for the minimum, and I would encourage you to really think hard about those cuts and what they actually mean. Thanks.
Thank you.[682.82][682.82](APPLAUSE).
I'm going to put out what I said, thank you very much for considering.
Heather O'Neil?
Hi, I'm Heather O'Neil, I have a middle schooler, I have two elementary school children, and I have a kindergartner next year, so if we can take my comments times four. My first is actually a question. So, the line item for the school peace officer, I understand that that's going to be a controversial line item either direction that you go. I understand that you probably heard a lot of people really pushing for more security or protection after the recent horrible events in Parkland, and I know at the last board meeting that I was at, I heard some people beginning to come forward and speak saying that they felt the other way, that this was reactionary. So, my question would be, do we have a data point for what is the gun-to-student ratio at peer institutions? So, we have one SRO, we have one gun per however many people we have, maybe it's, I think someone at the last meeting said it was about 845 people here during the day? I tried to do a little Googling, it's, these are numbers that are hard to find, obviously, especially just through Google. It looks like, for example, LA County Unified School District, which is the second largest school district in the country, has a one per thousand. Our ratio is better than that. So, I was just curious to know, at a school like, I don't know, Chappaqua, or in Putnam, or some of those other schools, what are their ratios for how much, how many guns they have per student?
Well, I have never heard that gun-to-student ratio before.
I'm a scientist, so.
That's a, that's a new one. I think the parents' biggest concern, there are a couple of things that seem to be coming to the surface. One is that if we have our SRO in one building, they're not in the other. And that's, that's probably, I would say, the thing I've been hearing the most. The other issue, and some, some concerns have been when our kids are outside. And so, this is, we are, we are responding not, it's not a knee-jerk reaction, because this is something that has been growing, and the need for it has been growing, and we have, we brought the SRO in, which is still relatively new for the district. And now, we're looking at whether or not we provide the services, the safety services for the school district to the, to the level that many of our people would like to see. Many people may not. And this is, there's a dichotomy here, and so, we try to listen to everyone and meet somewhere in the middle. And so, I don't know what the ratio is, I can tell you what the concerns have been from parents, and I can tell you that where we've heard many parents have major concerns, we've had other parents that haven't. And so, it's, it's kind of, this is, this is a real dichotomy for this district.
So, one of my concerns would be adding a line item, like an SPO, at the expense of taking away educator positions. For example, one of my main concerns is the library position. That's a very unique, the elementary school library librarian is particularly unique. We, as a community, spent a lot of time and effort putting the garden in place, and the current elementary school librarian runs an amazing program for the library garden. It's something that is right in line with our strategic goals of Haldane. It's really amazing project-based learning, and, you know, we're already having to sacrifice these TOSA situations, so I would hate to see that happen again, especially with someone who is as highly educated as that particular educator is, and has so many years of experience, and is coming in at just a TA salary. So, that's something that I would love the board to consider. Thank you.
Thank you.[947.38][947.38](APPLAUSE). And the last name I have on the list is Sandy McKelvey. If anyone else would like to speak, I'd just ask that you sign in.
I'm not as tall as Heather. Hi, I'm Sandy McKelvey, I have two kids, one in middle school and one in, well, actually, one in elementary, one in middle, but they're going to be in middle and high school next year, so. I'm here because I'm also, as Heather O'Neil also mentioned, I'm concerned about the line item for the peace officer and for the additional security. And, and I really, I thought about this a lot, because, I mean, all of us have been traumatized, I mean, there's no doubt about that. Every one of us in this room wants our kids to be as safe as possible, and nobody would deny that. There's no, there's no politics in that. There's trauma, right? And the thing is, though, if you, if you can step away from the trauma, what's really important is to look at data. I'm not a scientist, like Heather, but, but today I spent a lot of time Googling to get data, because I really wanted to know, like, what, what is, what's out there in terms of studies, and, and not just studies, but just, like, numbers, like, you asked about guns to students. Well, actually, I do have some numbers, not, not in that way, but, but similar to that. And so, if you'll bear with me for a little bit, and I hope you'll find this educational, because I really did, because I, I wanted to really learn what an SRO is and what an SPO is, and I went to the Putnam County Sheriff Department website, and it said, and it was really clear, it was really, it's very interesting. An SRO is an educator, law enforcer, and counselor. As an educator, the SRO visits the classrooms and teaches students concepts of safety, traffic laws, general law, and crime prevention techniques. The SRO works closely with individual teachers to create special programs tailored to specific units of study. These presentations help increase student awareness and understanding of laws and personal safety. As a uniformed police officer, the SRO provides a positive image of law enforcement in an effort to help young people make constructive choices in their lives. That sounds really nice, you know, and they call it a triad position, counselor, teacher, law enforcement officer. If any of you have young kids, or did have young kids, or you're young, or you're education teachers, do you remember Officer Buckle? Does anyone remember that? It was a great book. Who remembers Officer Buckle? It was this wonderful book about this, this lovely officer, that, I don't know if he was an SRO or not, but he would come into the school and teach about law enforcement, he had a cute little dog, Gloria. Gloria. So, you know, it's a nice thing, I'm not against it, right? And then, I looked up the National Association of School Resource Officers to find out, how many of them are out there in this country? Well, it turns out there are between 14,000 and 20,000 SROs currently in the, in the service nationwide. And that estimate, that, that estimate currently is 20% of all US K-12 schools, public and private. And many of those SROs serve more than one school district, and some schools have more than one. So, it depends. So, that's why they don't have an exact number, but it's about 20%. After doing some further reading, oftentimes, and historically, this is before Columbine, SROs started appearing in schools in 1950s, they were generally in high schools or middle schools, and their main job was to keep order on the campus, diffuse fights among students, student-teacher altercations, things like that. So, then I wanted to look, look a little bit deeper, look at New York State. New York State, there are about 4,000, there are 4,500 school buildings in New York State and 733 public school districts. There are currently about, well, there had been 400 school resource officers in New York State, it has been reduced to 100 over the last few years. I don't know if it was 400, you know, in 2012 as a reaction to, to Columbine, I mean, I'm sorry, to Sandy Hook, and now it's, it's been reduced because of loss of state funding, I think is one of the reasons. So, what about Putnam County? How many school resource officers do we have in Putnam County? I can tell you. It says it on the Putnam County Sheriff's Department website. Carmel has two, Brewster has three, Maupac has two, Putnam Valley has one, Garrison has zero, Patterson has zero, and we have one. And that's all of them. I looked at Duchess County, because I figured, why not look at Duchess County? There are about 20 schools in Putnam County, Duchess County, I think, only five of them have school resource officers. So, why do we need another one? We have one, we've decided to have one, and I really, I really believe that, that additional 30,000, and I also question the additional, the other 30,000 for enhanced security, we don't really know, we don't know if that's going to have an effect. And that's the main thing that I really, you know, I was trying to do my research, what are the studies that show that these additional officers are really going to save lives? They don't have, there's, there's no, there are no studies, there are no statistics that prove that. So, basing, basing our policy on trauma is, I don't really think is the right way to go. I mean, we have to base it on data, on information, and if we don't have that information now, does it really make sense to take $60,000 of our budget that really should stay in education and put it in security, when we don't know if that's the right choice? Thank you.[1333.99][1333.99](APPLAUSE).
In, yeah, in the spirit of the open meetings law, I, people saw me pass a note to the president, and my note said that because so many people had passed on their time, I didn't think it was appropriate for us to hold Sandy McKelvey to the two-minute limit that we had stated. I think Sandy spoke quite a bit over, and I just wanted to make, I wanted, I didn't want people, again, in the spirit of the open meeting laws, I didn't want people to think that there was communication among the board members that wasn't being shared with the public.
It literally says, given how many passed, I'm not sure we should limit her. That's what it said.
Okay, and now, the last name I have on the list is Lara Eldon.
Hi, I'm Lara Eldon, and I just wanted to thank the board and the administration for all your hard work on this budget. It's evident that you've been listening and making changes, and we all appreciate that. Something I've been thinking about as I've been following this discussion is also in relation to the diminishment rather than the enrichment of the library program at our school, or the proposed diminishment. In a tough budget year, it's important to make the decision-making process that you're going through strength-based, like, I've heard our administrators talk about and tell our students, and not disproportionately focused on our perceived weaknesses, and this sort of relates to some of where the budget is being spent. So, just, one of the great, Haldane's great strengths at the elementary level is a position that connects the garden and the library. There will always be other schools with more security or more technology, or even bigger gardens, but it has been a great innovation on the part of Haldane parents, teachers, and the administration, after years of volunteer-based work to create a genuine interdisciplinary role of garden librarian at the elementary level, and to see the garden not only as a place to grow plants and learn about plants and food, but as a place to grow broad-based knowledge, sorry, I'm a little nervous, by volunteering to assist our immensely dedicated and knowledgeable garden librarian. I have seen firsthand how she creates a strong tie-in with the curriculum throughout the elementary school grades, kindergarten through fifth grade, that is a huge thing she's doing. She offers students a way to build their literacy skills in a way that is interdisciplinary, that involves geography, geology, botany, science, math, and even history. And that, in a way, and she does that in a way that is inclusive of so many types, styles, and levels of learners, allowing them to make truly unique learning connections and think creatively. The elementary-level garden library program lays an even better foundation for the sort of problem-solving, project-based, connected learning that students will be expected to engage in as they continue into the upper grades and through life, and I think this is in line with a strategic plan, I haven't read it fully, but I think it is. So, I just wanted to give a shout-out to the very unique and important garden library program that the school has built, and hope that can keep it up. Thank you.[1551.28][1551.28](APPLAUSE).
On February 26th Board of Ed meeting, we had Frank come from Bosse's, he's going to do a safety audit. As far as data is concerned, it sounds like that would be the most beneficial data about this school? When is that going to be here?
It's in the process.
Okay.
So, I don't know if we're going to have it before we vote on the budget.
Could he? So, in my, in my line of work, when I collect data and analyze it over time, it's sometimes possible for me to give preliminary findings or early results or something like that. Do we think that that's a possibility?
I can ask.
I mean, I'm just wondering, because it is an important issue, and I do think it would be helpful. But if not, it's not.
I also want to just remind the public that the, the proposal of the SPO and the entrance security that's being discussed, that is the compromised proposal. There, there are members of the community who want a whole bunch more than that, right? So, it's not like people were asking for an SPO and we're giving them that instead of giving them nothing. That is the compromise that is currently on the table, because what the, what other people, what other members of the community are asking for is far, far more than that. So, just so you guys know, our process is taking in that perspective, as well as taking in the other perspective that's been presented tonight, is of, you know, should we have an SPO at all? Do we really need that additional security? We're taking in that perspective, as well as the people who want a whole bunch more than that, and this, what we've come up with is, is the, is the compromised position. So, I don't want you to, I want you guys just to understand our process with that.
Any other additional public comment at this time? Okay, we're going to close the floor and move on to superintendent's report at this time.
Okay. It's also not rude if anybody feels like they were just here for the budget and you want to scoot out, that is, that is not rude to do that.
Sorry, thanks for the reminder.
You can stay, but we will be offended.
Boy, you cleared the room.
I know. Just going to give people an out if they want it.
Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you. I know that you think Tony and David, I'm trying to think ahead here.
Yeah, I think.
Tony and David, if you would like to feel free.
If you don't invite me, I might have to go home.
Oh, that was in the budget. Hold on.
Wait, Tony, you're not there. But, but it doesn't work. Bye, David.
I'll be back at 7:00.
Oh, it's not. Good night.
No, it's just in there if we had questions.
However, it's not working.
Oh, it's, the link isn't coming up?
I know, Caitlin asked this morning, sorry, Caitlin?
Yep.
Is that what she said? Sorry.
We have the information.
Oh, that was in the budget. Hold on.
Wait, Tony, you're not down.
But, but it doesn't work.
Bye, David.
I'll be back at seven to noon.
Oh, it's not. Good night. Good night.
No, it's just in there if we had questions.
However, it's not working.
Oh, it's, the link isn't coming up?
I know Caitlin asked this morning, sorry, Caitlin?
Yep.
Is that what she said? Sorry.
We have the information about the support services personnel.
I can speak to it.
Yep, I have the hard copy.
I mean, I don't want to scoot over it. I actually think like it's really interesting, and the board asked for more information, and so we should get it. I don't, if the information isn't available to the public, then maybe we can postpone it till.
The further workshop.
Oh, there's the superintendent's report.
It is, but the link's not working.
The link doesn't work.
The superintendent's report, it does. Refresh your, refresh your browser if you don't see it. It's item number five.
Yeah, we're there.
It's not working for you, it's working for me.
Unable to process request.
It's funny, because it's working on mine.
It's not under wellness services?
Oh, it's working on mine.
It does work, yes. So that's, that's where, so, so, yeah.
Yeah, it's up.
So it's E5, Agenda E5, that's where it is, not, not anywhere else.
Not the budget.
There it is. Perfect.
Thanks. So it's on Board Docs, Caitlin, if you want to, and I think Sandy, you asked about this report as well. It's up on Board Docs.
Which report?
About the mental health professionals and what's, it's currently on Board Docs, what Dr. Shaw is about to talk about.
Section E5.
So technically, this is what we call, excuse me, special services at Haldane. One of the departments that I manage, in addition to special ed, is special services, and that really encompasses, I guess you could also call it, mental health resources. The staff that we maintain here are psychologists, counselors, which includes guidance counselors, and social workers, in addition to two others that are funded externally, including a prevention educator, and soon to be a, I don't, I put TBA under the title because I think it was probably just going to be a licensed clinical social worker, but I don't know that we have necessarily a title for that other than just Haldane social worker yet, but it'll be someone who works with our students and their families during school hours and after-school hours. So what I would like to do is just sort of walk everyone through quickly the different roles that we have at Haldane and which buildings they work with, and just sort of generally what kind of ratio we're talking about in terms of the services they provide to which number of students in each building or across buildings. Okay? So in the elementary school, we do have a social worker, and the role, the role of the social worker is to assist students in removing social-emotional barriers that they may experience that would preclude learning in the classroom. Okay? So that might be something that arises of social-emotional tumult, whether it's an interpersonal conflict, something that happened at home, some sort of ongoing crisis that bubbles up between friends or otherwise, that they can see the social workers as sort of a one-off saying, you know, I need help, or maybe the teacher recognizes the child needs help, and they can counsel that child through that one problem, which is, I guess, what we call building-level service. The social worker also maintains social groups, including groups for children of divorced parents, other kinds of groups that are sort of assembled ad hoc, depending on identified common needs per-grade level or cross-grade level. And of course, that social worker also provides mandated services through students' individualized education programs as mandated counseling listed on the IEP. And so our elementary social worker works right now with grades K through 5 and part of 6th grade. Our 6th grade this year is a very large grade. The needs among some of them are, have been intensive in the past. Our elementary social worker is very familiar with that crew, and so she maintained part of that caseload going into their 6th grade. So she's, she's spread, she's spread pretty far right now, but her work is obviously very valuable. Right now, she has a ratio of 1 to 369, which is a pretty, pretty large ratio. In the middle school and the 9th grade, we have a school counselor who works in the capacity of guidance counselor. The role of guidance counselor is to help students in understanding what the expectations of the academic press and rigors of the secondary setting are, and helping them to understand self-management techniques and other strategies that help them stay on track to maintain a heavier course load going into secondary all the way through to graduation. So our 6th, 7th, 8th, and 9th grade guidance counselor works with students, and also sort of in the same capacity or similar capacity to the social worker, and knowing the students really well, being able to counsel them when sort of individual or atypical social-emotional issues arise, to sort of make sure that those barriers, those social-emotional barriers are removed so they can get back to the classroom and back to learning. We have a, a woman of many hats who technically is a school psychologist, but is also my other half in terms of chairperson of the committee on special ed. So she works in that capacity, she's a middle school counselor and a psychologist, and as the psychologist, she evaluates students or reevaluates students who have individualized education programs, either when they're initially referred to the committee on special ed or when, as per federal law, that IEP must be renewed on a triennial basis. So she conducts that testing, she reviews that testing at the committee. If I'm not present as the chairperson of the committee on special ed, she is there in my stead, and she also works with grades 6 to 8 in a counseling capacity. And the, I'm sorry, I neglected to mention, the ratio of the guidance counselor that I spoke about previously was 100, or 1 to 278. The psychologist who also works part-time as the middle school counselor is a ratio of 1 to 208. Which ones did I miss? We also have a social worker in the high school, like I said, same, same role as the elementary school social worker. Obviously, the children look a little bit different at the upper secondary level, so the problems the students experience look a little bit different, but same, same role, same capacity as the elementary, just for grades 9 to 12. Also, in the high school, we have a guidance counselor who works primarily in terms of guidance, although she also is licensed as a medical, what is the acronym? LMHC. Thank you. It's good to have that in the audience. Thank you, Maeve. As a, as the guidance director. So primarily, her role is making sure students understand the course catalog, graduation requirements, the very complicated and very graduation pathway options in New York State, which I don't even have a full grasp of, and traverse the general education and the special education extraordinarily complicated. So she meets with parents, she meets with students, she works with teachers, she instructed the teachers in a faculty meeting recently on all the new graduation pathway options and ran them through a case study so they had a better understanding and could guide their own students on it. But also, because of her licensure, she works with students in a more social-emotional capacity as well. So in addition to our high school social worker, she often will see students who are feeling the academic press, feeling the duress of the deadlines, and I'm sure Mae can empathize that it's, it's a, it's a heated environment up there. You're, you've given a lot of coursework, a lot of regents exams to complete. It can be very tedious and tiring, and so she's there as an additional support person to talk kids through the tunnel, to see the light at the other end. In addition, we also have a part-time school psychologist whose basic sole responsibility is to assist our other psychologists in evaluations, scoring, and reporting at committee on special education meetings. And as I mentioned before, we do have the other two externally-funded positions. One is a prevention educator who works with students to understand and identify social-emotional turmoil that could lead to substance abuse. And she also liaises between Haldane and the communities that care coalition for Phillips Town. So she's been an extraordinarily valuable resource to us, and very collaborative, and she works grades K through 9 right now, and we have her full-time at no, no cost at the district. And something else that Dr. Bauer spearheaded, and that I'm sort of taking the baton on, is our licensed clinical social worker that's being funded through Putnam County through an organization called Cove Care, which was previously Putnam County and Family Services, I want to say. And they're going to start interviewing for that full-time position, which I believe will start part-time if they can get somebody and then mutate into full-time or evolve into full-time into the fall, hopefully, the sooner the better, because that, I think that'll be a great resource too, especially someone who can work part-time during the school day and part-time after the school day ends, so that they can be present for our families who maintain hours during the, the school day and can visit after hours.
Tony, I appreciate all your hard work.
My pleasure.
Getting this done quickly.
Sure.
There's a few people on here that aren't on this list that are in this room that I think should be acknowledged, including yourself, Officer Shelters.
Yes.
And peer mentors.
Absolutely.
I'm not sure if Mae could speak to that program.
Oh, yeah. Maybe the.
I just wanted to kind of give a flavor.
Sometimes we focus ourselves a little bit on the roles of certain individuals that are assigned in a district without realizing that there are many other people in a district that can really change a student's life. And I, I think I was running through some examples in my mind, even just a cleaner or the cafeteria worker or a teacher or, there are lots of people who make differences in students' lives every day beyond what we have here. And just a few more that came to mind as I was looking through this, and I said, those are additionals that we should really talk about.
So on paper, special services is a small crew, but in reality, and this is what I've said time and again, and especially when we had our Friends and Family University, and I said, it really, it takes a village, and it just so happens that Haldane is a nice small village where almost everybody is known in some capacity to several adults, many peers, the cleaners, the drivers, the administration, the teachers, and so really, there's a lot of eyes and ears attending to our children, which is a phenomenal thing, one of the big reasons why I chose to, to join Haldane, because I identified with that small-town feeling and wanted to be a part of it. So in addition to me, who is the director of pupil personnel and special services, I work directly with a lot of students as the committee chairperson. I know all of our classified students. I have a, a relationship with most of the families because I've been in most of the meetings. We've had conversations about the students ongoing. I am also the administrator of the Haldane Academy. The academy, for those of you who don't know, as Dr. Bauer's described, is a specialized, though not special ed, program for students who have sort of not been met in the best way possible in a traditional academic setting, who need that extra layer of social-emotional support from a small staffing ratio, someone who cares so minutely about every aspect of their lives, day in and day out, that they're their cheerleader, they're their big brother, they're their coach, they're their confidant, someone who is absolutely dedicated to just a handful of students getting to graduation, understanding what their career options are, their college options are, their family options are. So that's, that's a big piece, and we have three individuals there, not just two teachers, but we also have a TA who works with them. In addition to that, we have several structures in the district that really are designed to assist special services. Child Study Team is one that kind of incorporates that. Child Study takes the sort of eyes and ears of special services and brings that into more of an academic setting to talk about what interventions could be done in the classroom to assist students if there's a behavioral component in addition to an academic struggle. Crisis Prevention Team is something that Dr. Bowers and I started last year that takes that to a higher notch, which incorporates all the administrators in the district, all the special services in the district, occasionally our school nurse, sometimes our school resource officer, and other members as needed as it pertains to each case, and we meet on a regular basis to discuss what those interventions would be, which often include wraparound services, phone calls home, home visits, and any other sort of solution that would be tailored to that student's circumstances as the need arises. And then also, there's Deputy Shelters. And Deputy Shelters is technically part of the special services department, although he's more of a free agent as an employee of the Sheriff's Department, who, actually, you also, you know, you, I think you've been a regular fixture, actually, at Crisis Prevention Team, just as a great thought partner, in helping us sort of think about the larger implications of crisis prevention and what we need to do to make sure that students are safe for themselves and for others, for their peers. Threat Assessment Team is something that Dr. Bowers and I recently learned about at Putnam Northwestern, Putnam Northwest Chester Bosse's, also led by Frank Gugliari, who's doing our security audit, and talking about what is even larger than the Crisis Prevention Team and how special services can act on imminent or urgent threats of students to themselves or others and how we act on those. So special services, you know, on paper, it might look kind of small, but it's actually district-wide and quite large and involves many players who really care deeply about every aspect of students' lives, not just math and ELA.
Sure, of course.
Does that capture it? Did I leave anybody out?
Absolutely. I just want to give Mae an opportunity to speak a little bit about the peer mentoring program.
Yeah, I'm not super familiar with the, the one-on-one peer mentoring group that I believe Mr. Manny runs, but I am a part of the peer leadership group with Ms. Moscow, where we go in and talk to 8th graders about different issues they may face in high school or they may be facing currently, and I think that is also a really good program because it gives the 8th graders, I guess, more of a confidential opportunity to talk to people they may be able to relate to more than a teacher or a guidance counselor, and sometimes it could be a little difficult to get them to participate in the conversation, but I think overall, it does help, and it's a really good program for the school to have.
Great. Thank you.
I have just a question at the table. So, oh, shoot. So the, at the bottom of the table, you, right, so you take the, you, it's an average of the, the student to, well, I guess, actually, staff to student ratio, and it's within the New York State suggested best practice range. In recommending that range, does the state identify what fact, what, what position should be counted as part of this? And I'll tell you, so not to minimize or, or, or not embrace like all the positive things that you just, you just said, but like a role like the CSE Chair or the school psychologist who spends time primarily evaluating for, for CSE meetings? I think those are important roles, but if I'm thinking about like mental health services, I, you know, like supporting, like, I guess, supporting like the, the mental well-being, I don't know if I would include the CSE Chair as that.
So that's actually not included.
It's not? Okay.
No, so I reduced the staffing ratio to compensate.
Based on that? Okay, thanks.
Yeah, sorry. That's a good observation. I meant to speak to it, but thank you for bringing up, yeah.
Well, yeah, and again, it's not to undermine, it's just wanting to, really wanting to understand that number and what it, and what it means.
Exactly.
And actually, our ratio would be better if you would have included, right, yourself and Officer Shelters.
But since it's not working in a social emotional, excuse me, social-emotional capacity, it's really just for evaluation purposes, I didn't include it.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Welcome.
With that, with that being said, though, these are, you know, it, it's interesting when you look at data, because, you know, we all know this, but then when you see it, it's like, wow, you know, and I know, Jen, this has been a big topic that you've brought up, so, I mean, I would encourage the board, obviously not this year, but for future years, to really try to tackle this, to, 1 to 369, 1 to 278. I mean, that's, I mean, you can, you can almost argue that the college advisor job could be a full-time position, just doing college advising.
It certainly is.
Okay? So I really encourage, you know, you guys over the next years to really try to somehow be able to bring more counselors and.
And also, keep in mind that state regulation is on the table, it's been proposing on the table for increased guidance counseling all the way down to the elementary level, so that might change our requirements for staffing in the future.
And there's some funding. They're talking about also helping to fund that.
Do you have some wood to knock on?
And I guess, the other piece that I was trying to get at are, there are other individuals that make a difference in schools, that can recognize potential, did you want to say something? Potential issues with students or what have you that, and I think, actually, this came up, believe it or not, in one of our superintendent interviews, right? Like trying to identify a kid on the lunch line that may not be having such a good day, but the cafeteria worker sees that student every day, whereas maybe the chemistry teacher would see that student once or twice a week, and would be able to identify and report back to, let's say, you or any of the other members of your faculty.
Yeah, you know, Jen Wilson did this project, and I don't know if it's an ongoing project, but she did this project where she had a list of all students. but she did this project where she had a list of all students, and she needed, wanted to make sure that each of the students were connected
Yes.
to an adult in the school, at least one. And the goal was to figure out, are there any students on this list that don't have a connection? And if so, let's connect them. And whether that connection was the cafeteria worker, the teacher, you know, just make sure that they had an adult, that they felt like they could talk to. And if not, address it. So it was a really individualized approach to making sure that everybody, there are no falling through the cracks, that everybody is really being seen, because we assume that, right? We assume that that's happening, we feel that that's happening, but, you know, on occasion, it may not. So this was her suggestion or her tool to figure it out. And I loved that idea, I don't know if it still happens, I don't know if it happens in a different way, but...
It doesn't, but well worth reinstating.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you. I don't want to keep you here any longer.
That's all right. As long as you guys want me.
We were sharing, it's fine, thank you. Okay, thank you.
All right, so the first few items on my list are kind of interrelated, except for the first, I will say, and we were actually talking about the fact that Frank Gugliari, the Regional Safety Coordinator from Putnam Northern Westchester Boces, is conducting a safety assessment. So that was the first one. We've talked about that a couple of times, and we'll see where he is and if he has any preliminary findings that he could potentially give us. All right, the next three are all about snow. You know, I was thinking, the first couple of days where you have snow days, everybody's so excited, and it's a really positive experience, and now it just hurts, you know, anytime you see snow. So, we are, we have to make some changes based on all the days that we have missed this year. And so, one of the things, we've been hearing a little bit about the two-hour delays out there, we will be canceling the two-hour delay in May. We've missed enough time at this point. And so, that's something that we're going to have to look at both this year and in the future. Our Superintendent's Conference Day, that we, let me go back. When we first decided to have two-hour delays, we had a trade-off of the Superintendent's Conference Day. And instead of having four conference days through the year, we've had three, and then we've moved one to the end of the year when we don't have students here. So, it's not that it's in addition to, it's a trade-off for one of them. And so, that was allowing teachers to plan and to continue project work through the year, instead of just having a conference day, a conference day, and a conference day. And so, that's something that was discussed. We have the trade-off, and we have moved the conference day to the end of the year. This year, we may not necessarily know when the conference day is going to actually be in place. So, right now, the calendar has our school year ending on Thursday, and it is the last day of school. That is going to move to Friday, and we may have a potential Superintendent's Conference Day the following Monday. At this point, we have used up our snow days, we also have no more vacation days, and it, the, there have been a number of requests on the part of the State Education Department, since this is such an unusual year to give dispensations. We have not heard if that's going to be the case. Two of the days that we have had, we have been required to close, and for those of you who have been kind of keeping track, one day was, we had a water day where we were asked, we were told to close, and we also had a state of emergency where we were told to close. And so, in addition to the snow days, those two days may be considered as well. So we're not sure exactly where this is going to play out. They're actually predicting more snow for next week. And so, yeah, it's just, it's relentless this year. So, we're, once we know when spring has finally arrived, we're going to be figuring out what the calendar is, and we'll send out information regarding that. So, those are all three of the next items.
Yeah, and are we going to talk a little bit more? We had talked about, you mentioned the two-hour delays.
Yep.
We talked about next year, maybe adjusting the calendar to make sure there were no two-hour delays in January to March. I think currently, there's one scheduled in March. Is that something that is possible? Is it something that you want to look at?
Well, actually, we tried, we figured by that point in March, we wouldn't have a problem.
Yeah, I know, I'm sure you figured that, but like, in current state of affairs...
But we could push it, yes. I mean, there's not, there's no problem with it being in April and May if we do that. And we're trying, we don't want to bump up against weather issues, and so that was, but yes, and if that seems to be the pattern, then we're going to be looking at that.
I mean, just because that's part of the problem, is that we've had so many snow days, and on top of that, you feel like you have another two-hour delay, it's like, you know, a knife in your heart.
Yeah.
So if we could take the two-hour delays and push them away from January to March, I think that might be helpful. And I'd also, my understanding of the two-hour delays is that the teachers love them, that we've gotten like some really positive feedback from the teaching staff, that it's very helpful, that it's very constructive, professional development time for them. Is that accurate? Because that's my understanding.
That is accurate. And actually, we discussed the March two-hour delay, we discussed canceling that.
Yeah, that one probably.
But we, when we talked about it, we also had, our math department had organized to have trainers in, and they were coming in, and it was, you know, in the midnight hour, we were talking about, should we be canceling it? And, you know, all of this work had gone into it, so we just kind of threw our hands up with that one.
Just a quick, so we already adopted the calendar for next year, so I think what we're saying is that we're open to maybe reconsidering. Right now, there's a two-hour delay scheduled for March 20th, as well as, I think actually, some of the Superintendent's Conference Days in March must be for meetings? Anyway, I think what we're saying is maybe we want to look at the calendar again, even though we've adopted it, because when I'm looking right now, March has a full Superintendent's Conference Day, a half, a half-day parents' conference day, and a two-hour delay.
Would be, is that for like parent-teacher conferences around?
That's what I was wondering.
Report cards?
I don't know. That's what I thought was some of it was, for parent-teacher conferences, but anyway.
Margaret has another reason.
Yeah, so someone brought to my attention that November 11th is a Sunday this year, being celebrated on November 12th is the day observed, and we have that as a Superintendent's Conference Day, and we can't have the teachers come in on that day. We can't ask them to come in, it's a federal holiday.
We didn't catch it.
We didn't catch it.
I don't know if that's true.
Yeah.
Veterans Day?
I don't think, I don't know if that's true, that we can't have them come in.
There are, there are some holidays where we can, and I believe Veterans Day is one of them, Election Day is one of them.
Yeah, we only get off if it's actually the 11th, Veterans Day. So, I mean, I'm not saying not to do it, but I'm just saying, we're not mandated, I don't think, to do it. I mean, I know in the city, we didn't, we weren't off on the 10th, and like, Haldane was closed on the 10th, but we, in the city, we were open.
Some of the holidays are a little flexible.
I thought it was the administrators, I'll have to review the contract.
Well, yeah, I mean, we don't need to settle it right now. I think the issue is that we want to, we realize we need to reopen the calendar.
Right, okay.
Fun never stops.
All right, the next Haldane Safety Committee meeting is scheduled for the 9th of April and at 3:15 in B1.
Oh, yeah, sorry. That's my committee, I'll be in Los Angeles for work. It would be great if somebody else from the board could be there.
And maybe before that meeting, you could have some, at least, you said you were going to touch base with the safety audit?
Yep.
Assessment person? Maybe just if you could, it'd be great if you could have touched base with him before that meeting, so you could share if he's willing to do any preliminary findings, like Peggy was talking about or not, just so we can...
My sense is it's so early in the audit, probably we're not going to have much, but we'll ask.
Yeah, yeah, just so you ask.
Can, can anybody go to that? Because it's Monday.
Yeah.
I may be able to.
Okay.
We can figure that out along the way. We have five minutes on this tape.
I'll be there. Yep. Okay. So, the next Board of Education workshop is scheduled for Tuesday, April 17th, at 7:00 PM in the middle school, high school library. Topics will be hopefully adopting the Haldane budget, approved propositions, and property tax report cards. So that will be on the 17th. The board will meet on Tuesday, April 24th, at 2018, at which time they will vote for the Putnam Northern Westchester Boces annual budget and the trustees. And that will be a very short meeting, kind of five-minute meeting, just to say yea or nay and have that end.
What time are we going to do that?
We're going to talk about that in the next, in our next discussion.
Okay.
If we can just get through your last one, and then we'll switch the tape.
Okay, and the annual district meeting and trustee election will be held on Tuesday, May the 15th, 2018, at from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM in Room 105 of the elementary-middle school building. The board will convene in the band room following the closing of the polls, and will announce the result of the vote when they are available.
Can I just ask a question, Joanne? You don't have the answer to this. So, if kids who have signed up and are registered to vote, and they're registered, as long as they're registered to vote, they can vote in the school, in the school election, in the school budget, is that correct? If they do it, they can do it by absentee?
They...
As long as they're registered to vote, school is included in that?
Yes, yes.
Right?
Yes. Oh, you're saying students, not students who are Haldane students?
Well, no, not, no, students who are way in college.
Oh, college students.
Who are registered to vote. I don't think, they don't think of that. I think they think of the big elections.
Right.
So, they may or may not be home by May 15th, so I think it would be worth making sure that these kids knew that if they are registered here, they should be looking at the information here and their budgets, and they should, they should be taking responsibility for their hometown.
Yeah, they need to fill out an absentee ballot application, and there is one up on the website already, and there is time constraints on when the deadline is for sending it to me. If they want the ballot mailed, I need to have it at least a week before the election.
So they have to do it directly to you, it's not the one that goes through the Board of Education?
Correct.
Through the Board of Elections?
Correct.
So it is different?
It's different, yes.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Okay. Did you want to change the tape? So, we are at Communication from the Public. Is there any additional communication from the public at this time? No?
Oh, you know, I wanted to say one thing.
Sure.
I am going to go, but it's one more thing. You know, I also think the foundation, as far as mental health is concerned, that two things, one thing that you've really done is that you're going, the teacher ratio in the classroom is something that really works toward mental health in a school situation as well, so that the kids have the ability for an adult to be able to see them and hear them and spend time with them is a huge asset for people's mental health in general. I have interviewed thousands of people in my work, and many of them, no matter how successful they are in life, remember the first grade when they felt worthless, or like somebody wasn't paying attention to them in the classroom. And it doesn't mean that they're going to do anything crazy, but their whole lives, they feel a sense of low self-esteem, so thank you for, you know, making sure that there's going to be a lot of teachers involved in these kids' lives. And the kid, in such a small environment, that you really do get to know them. But also, like, the foundation wrote a grant, "We're teaching yoga in the transitional years to the kids, we do yoga and mindfulness skills." And we do it in the third grade, we do it in the sixth grade, we do it in the 11th and the 12th grade. And the gym teachers, Coach D, Coach C, Coach Virgadamo, they're so into it, and they're pointing out kids are really going to benefit for it, and they're yelling, they're hooping it up, they do all of the mindfulness things. I mean, you would be amazed at how awesome the kids are, and the kids, they leave time for the kids to talk and to sort of be a part of the whole situation that's happening. So, I mean, like, we do have a greater community that also contributes volunteer-wise, bringing special activities into the classroom. And I think that that, too, is something that's really wonderful and unique about Haldane. And sometimes, we don't really know everything that's happening. I mean, there are many parents who spend just, like, many, many, many hours at the school, like you, Damian, you know, doing 100,000 hours of lighting to make the plays wonderful, and knowing all of the children, and giving them opportunity to be in the booths up there, and to learn something that goes with them all of their lives, and also gives them something special. So that, too, I just think should be mentioned.
Thank you.
And on that note.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
Sure.
Make up for those people who passed. I think you already did that as well.
About six people passed, that's like 12 minutes, I have. You know, I was a little, I was a little nervous, I'm not a great, I'm terrible public speaker, I should say, I get nervous all the time, and even though I have a million notes, I don't remember everything that I have in front of me. But, but I really, I just, I wanted to, I know, I wanted to respond to what you said, Jennifer, about how this is a compromise with the peace officer. And I understand that, that there are many people in the community that wanted more than that, much more than that. So I hear what you're saying, but I, but I just wanted to just try to understand, as a district, that oftentimes, we follow by example, you know, we look at other districts that are near us. So, when I look at Putnam County, and I see that there are 21 schools, there are six districts, and, and then I looked at, you know, how many SROs there are in each school, and in most cases, they're in the high schools and middle schools. So in Carmel, there are two, it's the high school and the middle school. Brewster's the exception, it has one in the elementary, one in the middle school, and one in the high school. Maupac has middle school and high school. Putnam Valley has one in the high school. Garrison has none. Patterson has none, and Haldane has one for the whole K-12. So, if we look at that, I just, I don't really see where it would make sense for our school district to have more than one. I mean, I know we're not talking about, I know it's SPO.
Do you have SPOs in that data as well?
No, I don't have SPOs. Do you have that data?
I think that, I know that there are SPOs in many of the districts.
Can you give me that information?
Do you have any, do you have any idea?
Well, maybe that would be important to know, because it's not on the Putnam County Sheriff's website.
And also, many school districts use security guards in place of SPOs, so there's a lot of different data that perhaps isn't being captured, so we, oh, sorry, go ahead, Matt.
Just along that point, just speaking to the point of the actual numbers, the numbers were relatively solid, you know, they're pretty good numbers, but when you take the numbers off of the NASSRO website, which is the National Association of School Resource Officers, they're only giving you the nationally-certified school resource officer numbers. There's other districts that are using police officers in the capacity of a school resource officer, but they're not technically labeled school resource officer. I know specifically, you mentioned that there's only five school resource officers, school resource officers in Dutchess County. I know that there's quite a bit more than that. There's multiple officers from the sheriff's office, from other jurisdictions and other departments, that are in the schools and in the capacity of a school resource officer, but they're not technically being labeled as that, based off of their certifications and their qualifications. I don't, at this point, this summer, I am going to be going out to the state conference and to the national conference, and I'm going to be both certified as state and nationally as a school resource officer, and at that point, I will be added into those numbers. But if you look at just the statistical data right now, I don't even count as a school resource officer, because I'm not certified under their, you know, their heading. So there are quite a bit of SPOs. I know a lot of districts in Dutchess County are also using retired police officers, that they're hiring as quasi-security guards, that are doing the job of an SRO, they're, you know, retired law enforcement, they're just not being labeled as such and being published as being an SRO in the school. So, like I said, you know, most of the data was pretty good, but the problem is those other little gray areas just fall through the cracks and aren't really acknowledged on that kind of level.
Yeah, I agree, and that's, that's why the National Association of School Resource Officers said that it's approximately 20%, because they really don't have the data. But, but on the other hand, there's also very little data, if any data, on whether those school resource officers, or SPOs, or retired officers, or security officers are really going to prevent a shooting. I mean, I think it's clear that the reason for SROs originally had nothing to do with these horrific, you know, traumatic events that have been taking place over the last 12 years or 20 years. It was really about altercations among students, and, and also to create an environment where there is a good, a good communication between young people and law enforcement, which is, you know, an excellent, you know, opportunity for us students to have. But when we have, you know, we keep talking about how we have such a... But when we have, you know, we keep talking about how we have such a tight budget this year. It's so tight. We have to cut things. We just have to do it and not everyone's going to like what we cut. So I have to raise that question. You know, is now the right time to add another $60,000 to the budget for security? I know that we, we're all traumatized. We want an answer. We want, we want, we all want our kids to be safe. We want an answer. We want that magic bullet. We want to be able to say that no matter what, nothing's going to happen in this school, but we can't do that. So does it make sense right now to take $60,000 from an edu, you know, from the budget for education, as Heather O'Neill had mentioned, a program that for years, for years, the, the community has been wanting to have this garden library position? It has been worked on, you know, but, I mean, if we did a, if we did a Survey Monkey, you know, what would you rather have, the garden librarian or would you rather have an SPO? I mean, do we know really what the public wants? I mean, I understand that this, at the safety meetings, there are a lot of people who are advocating for more security. I get it. But have you heard from the rest of the community about what they want?
Thank you. Sure.
I actually have a friend who goes to Marjorie Stoneman Douglas. And she's talked a lot about how before the shooting, they had security on campus and they had a lot of security measures. And obviously after the shooting, they've had even more. And she's talked a lot about how before the shooting, having more security didn't necessarily make them feel safer and after it hasn't either. And I just think from a student perspective, a lot of us feel that having more security doesn't necessarily make a difference and just kind of makes you feel sort of trapped and like it's trying to fix a bigger solution with, or sorry, a bigger issue with a too small solution. And I agree with what Ms. McKelvey was saying about how it's not necessarily something that I think we should be using funds meant for education for. And yeah, I guess that's just my opinion on that.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to information reports, financial. These are here for our perusing at this time. And on to consent agenda minutes. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda financial, may I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda personnel, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Correspondents. There has been many different correspondence that the board has received over the past few weeks. Just want you to know that if yours did not show up on the public agenda, please don't feel offended. It's for your protection. We strictly adhere to the FERPA laws. And if we felt there was any way in which privacy would have been violated, we felt it would be in best interest not to post the correspondence on the public site. So just kind of wanted to throw that out there. Okay. Unfinished business. Item number one, superintendent search at this time. Unfortunately, our candidate of choice pulled out and we did not have the opportunity to fully negotiate an agreement with them. So the board has decided that we are going to move on and we're going to be committed to the district in providing the best possible solution. We will be interviewing two additional candidates on Thursday, April 5th. That's this Thursday. And if we feel that these candidates are candidates that we feel should move forward to the stakeholder committee, we will do that as well. So stakeholder committee, be on, stand by.
Can we contact the stakeholder committee?
Yes.
I'm sure they're all sitting at home, you know, waiting, watching. But maybe we can contact them directly.
Sure. I obviously did not do that prior to announcing the current state of affairs. So we will be reaching. Right. Item number two, the board will hold their annual meeting with the high school students on Thursday, April 5th from 8:15 to 10:15 in room 211 of the high school building. This is really a public meeting, but we hold it every year. It gives the high school students an opportunity to kind of let us know what's going on in their worlds, what's their thinking. And it's been a great couple of years we've been doing it and found it to be a great opportunity. And it's amazing, some of the ideas that are brought up in those meetings. So, thank you. Okay, last-
Are we going into classrooms or we're just staying in that?
You know, last year, I don't think we went into classrooms, right?
So it's a different day?
No, that's the day.
Same day?
Mm-hmm.
We toured. Two years ago, we toured.
We don't have to, I'm just asking.
I hope we did last year.
I can, we didn't do it last year.
Roundtable.
Correct.
Okay.
But I can certainly reach out to Ms. Sniffin if we want to visit a few classes.
We're running out of time.
Yeah, or maybe that was what the problem was. That's what happened. We never, we ran out of time last time. There were some on the docket for us to look into, but we were all chatting and the chat went on and on. So we didn't-
And I think they've lunched 10:30, right? Is it?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's why we didn't do it last year.
Oh, that's right.
That's right.
Okay, lastly, reminder that there are applications for the position of trustee to the Board of Education available in the district office. The applications are due to the district clerk by Monday, April 16th at 5:00 p.m. There are two open trustee seats that are both available for a three-year term from July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2021. Trustee Evan Schwartz has indicated that he will not seek reelection. And I am pleased to announce that trustee Margaret Parr has decided that she will be seeking reelection. She was undecided. So Margaret.
So I decided in the end that since we are in the realms of picking a new superintendent, that it would make the most sense if that new superintendent was onboarded with most of the people. I'm not putting any pressure on you, Evan, with most of the people who were responsible for hiring them. So I thought I would just stay on and help onboard the new superintendent. And I'll look for your vote. Thank you. Thank you.
Do we have current? Do we, can you, can we announce how many we have petitions for or do we have petitions?
On April 16th, when the petitions are due at the end of the day, that's when I know how many I have.
Okay.
Makes sense because people may pick up packets, right?
And they could make copies and they can actually make their own petitions. And I won't know until that day.
They can make copies and hand them over to their friends. Yeah.
Which I did, but that's hard happening.
Do we have any submitted though?
I have not received any completed petitions yet.
Okay. Moving on to new business, Ms. Norma Laurel.
This, these are the CSE/CPSE recommendations and the recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the recommendations of the Committee on Special Education and Preschool Special Education as indicated.
May I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, this is kind of up here for discussion. If we feel that we should hold another meeting, budget meeting on April 10th, we kind of tossed this around a little bit and I know some of us were, some of us were unsure. So what's everybody feeling?
As much, as much as I hate to say it, I feel as though there's been a lot of feedback from the community and for them to come today, give feedback, send us emails and then just show up on the 17th and say, here it is, we at least need to at least demonstrate that we're now having the, that we're, we're talking about it. Like, like the SPO issue, this is the librarian issue. We really haven't discussed it, okay? And I don't think we want to start discussing it now. So, so maybe, you know, this way-
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
Like, I'll be, I mean, I've already said this. I'll be in Los Angeles, but I think the time difference, I can join, I can do my best to join. I can do my best to join by video. It'll be 4 o'clock. Typically, when I'm in Los Angeles for work, I actually prefer to be walking on the beach by that time, but that's okay because I start really early in the day, but I will forego walking on the beach and join. I agree. I think we need, I agree with Evan, 100%.
Even if it's just another opportunity to share the budget-
And for other people to-
With people or for them to ask questions or give feedback.
And for us to be out in the community and kind of hearing, hearing more too.
Yeah, I think we need to do another one.
Okay, do you have a resolution for April 10th?
Well, you don't actually need one. You can just call a meeting.
Okay.
But if you want to, if you want to read a resolution, you may.
If we don't need to, let's see.
The recommendation is that the Board of Education will meet on Tuesday, April 10th, 2018.
Do we want to have it at a regular 7 o'clock Tuesday night time because that's our board meeting time? Do we have any interest in-
That's what would work best for myself because I have to work. So-
Me too. It would be impossible for me to join remotely or before 7.
As opposed to-
Very good.
Yeah.
Just checking in.
7 o'clock and what is the location?
Right here.
In the band room. Okay.
May will be in New Orleans.
April 10th, 7:00 p.m. in the-
Laura, you heard that?
Band room. May will not be here. Yes?
So actually, May, you weighed in on one issue tonight. That was great. So I guess if you hear, I mean, other things from students, that would be the one thing you could submit.
Well, we're going to have that opportunity to meet with the students, actually.
Oh, that's true. All right. But as our references-
Although they may not be fully versed on the budget.
Right.
I actually saw a few-
Budget, but I know, I think like the school peace officer issue, I feel like people are familiar with. And the security issues, I think people are familiar with.
Yeah. Well, I guess, again, not to put any pressure, but with the issue of that and then the other thing that's being weighed is actually sort of the middle school, high school librarian. If there, if you heard other things, I would, it would make sense for you to submit it as board correspondence. I mean, I can't imagine how else May could communicate it unless she were to communicate it directly just to one or two of us.
She could just-
You can just tell Laura.
Communicate to the board president.
Yeah. Which is, yeah, correspond, yeah.
Yeah, you could just correspond to the board president if you felt like there were more, more things you wanted to share.
Where will you be in the process of getting to New Orleans at 7 o'clock then? Could you FaceTime in if you needed to?
I don't think we want to do that.
If there was something really important.
Probably. Yeah, I, I, we can because we're leaving at like 8:30, but.
All right. But if there was something really important.
If you wanted to send an email to Laura.
Submitting as correspondence.
If you wanted to email Laura, she can read your email in public.
Yeah.
I don't, I'm not sure. I asked Linda if we needed a resolution because it's an additional meeting. I think she put that on there just to make it official.
Or whatever you wanted, but I can read a resolution if you like.
Better to have it online than-
Go back.
So the recommendation is that the Board of Education will meet on Tuesday, April 10th, 2018 at 7 o'clock in the music room for further discussions of the 2018, 2019 Haldane School budget.
I have a motion.
Question. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Here comes another one, so just be prepared. It's in executive content. This is the discussion in regards to the start time for the Board of Education meeting on Tuesday, April 24th, at which time the board will vote on the Putnam Northern Westchester Bosse's administrative budget and trustees. This is the one that we discussed and said that we may need just a quick 10-minute meeting.
And we just need a quorum. We just need-
We just need three. Trying to figure out-
So if it's 7 o'clock, I usually don't leave till 7:15, 7:30, so I'm good.
Wait, what? You're saying this morning?
So in the morning?
In the morning, yeah. It's at 7:00 a.m.
Well, I originally suggested it, but April 24th has been changed. The SAT is given in my school that day because of the snow. It was rescheduled to that date. So 7:00 a.m. won't work for me. I could do-
But you could video in.
He's driving.
Or maybe not.
Yeah, I'm driving.
Oh, you're driving? Oh, because it's in the morning. It's at 7.
We don't have to have it at 7.
Can we do it at 5 or 5:30? I mean, can we do it at 5 or 5:30? I mean, I could probably get here by 5:30.
It's PM or 8:00?
No, that is-
That's wishful thinking. Or we just try a 6 o'clock, 10-minute meeting.
Yeah, no, anytime after, I mean, I'd say 5:30, but I could do 6, 7, 10 minute. I don't-
It almost sounds like we know you are working in front-
I mean, if you guys could do 7, you could still do it. I'm just saying, I know I suggested it, but now-
Well, we know Margaret-
Yes, and my mom is having surgery in Texas. I am available.
Peggy and Margaret's not available until what time in the evening?
5:30, that's pushing it.
Is pushing it.
I can FaceTime in the afternoon. Like, I mean, I could FaceTime in the afternoon.
2:30?
Is that a good time for you?
I mean, are you guys able to do 2:30?
I can do 2:30.
All right, I can.
Well, we don't need, we don't, if it's three of you, then I don't need to FaceTime.
Well, Margaret would need to FaceTime in as well.
Okay.
Wait, we need three or four?
Can you guys do six?
Three.
Can you two do six? Can you do six?
I could do six.
Can you do six? PM?
I can do six.
So why don't we just do six?
6:00 PM.
And where do you-
I may or may not be there.
What location do you want?
In this-
You want the district office? You want the library?
District office.
Okay.
PM, district office, 10:00.
Okay. Okay, so the recommended action is that the Board of Education will meet at 6:00 p.m. for their previously scheduled meeting on April, their previously scheduled April 24th meeting in the district office.
May I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Is there any additional communication from the public at this time? Has it dwindled?
Dwindled.
So may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.